I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Bring the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, public comments. Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Christopher Bowen, 26 Birchwood Road. Am I allowed to present something to the board?
Sure.
That will betress my point. So as I've gotten more involved in the town of Seymour overall, I've learned of the extreme impact of one Katherine Mathis and the foundation that was started in 1987 under her name. Just the sheer volume of nonprofit grants and college scholarships that her foundation has given away is immeasurable. I could use my whole two minutes talking about that. But the pictures that I've given you are one for the field named in her name up by Silvermine Park and the other one Chatfield Park Walking Track. And you will notice that her name is spelled K-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E. Those are errors. Her name is spelled K-A-T-H-A-R-I-N-E. And it was brought to my attention that this is, while a common mistake, it's something that could potentially offend the Mathis Foundation that has been working in her honor over these years. So I ask that the board consider the process of correcting these errors. Whoever was responsible for ordering the signs or whoever printed the signs, whoever's responsible for the mistake is irrelevant. Ultimately, the Mathis Foundation and Katherine Mathis' legacy herself is worth well more than whatever it would cost to correct these signs. And I ask that the board take this under consideration and go about the due process of getting this started. Thank you.
Thank you. Ror, can you make a note? You can look into that. Just bear with me one second. Because I just checked the email from the foundation itself and it does have an A, so... Ror, could you figure out? We have to get two new signs ordered. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Name an address for the record, please.
Andy North, four and six Agello's Farm Road. I think I'm a little late to the party and I just wanted to ask more of a question. I know there's a roads report that's out there and I think it was going to be discussed or finalized tonight possibly at this meeting for the town in terms of what's going to be paved and what's not. All I wanted to do was to find out if there would be consideration of looking at our street. We got a B, you know, rating in this roads report. And I think it did say in there that there's going to be, for maybe some roads that are graded in good condition, there'd be some ceiling and crack repair. You know, our road is kind of beat up. It's not great. It hasn't been paved as far as I could tell in over 25 years. And, you know, I've spoken to many people in the neighborhood and we were all kind of hoping that it could be, you know, it could be looked at, at least given some consideration. I mean, it fell apart in front of my driveway and the town was good enough to come up the next day and fix it, which was great, but it was all deteriorating. And I know in the winter, some of the residents, it's been heaving and moving a bit. Doesn't look as bad as it did now, but it's definitely moving around. So just wanted to throw it out there and, you know, you guys could at all consider something, even if it's a ceiling or fixing it up a little bit with the money that you're going to allocate.
Which road did you say again?
Agello's Farm Road.
Agello's Farm, okay.
Yeah. So spoke to many of the neighbors. We all wanted to just ask and, you know, appreciate you taking the time and see if you can consider something.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll close public comment. We'll move to item number four, approved minutes from the July 16, 2019 regular meeting. Got motion to do so?
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes tied, motion passes 6-0. Item number five, first electman's report. Negotiations with the Seymour Police Union are ongoing. While we have reached tentative agreement on many items, including all the financial ones, there are still two outstanding new items that are being worked on. These items have to do with accrediting of comp time in place of overtime and staffing levels for workers' comp and disability situations. Both sides are very committed to get the contract done but are taking some extra time to work through these new, these two new items to make sure they are set up correctly. The contract is not up until June 30th of 2020, so there's still plenty of time. But our goal is to have everything done in the fall of 2019. Had a rating review call with S&amp;P to touch base on all of our current financials. This is a standard 18-month check-in from them to make sure we have been making or meeting all of our goals and are remaining on course. Our last rating was in September of 2017. The phone call went very well and we expect to receive an update back from them at some point next week. Met with Steve Gephardt and his staff from DEEP regarding the fish bypass fixes that will need to take place. DEEP has a plan in place for the corrections as well as a funding source. Their goal is to begin work in the next few months and finish up the corrections as quickly as possible. There will be no additional expenses to the town of Seymour for this work and they hope to have the fish bypass back up and running for next spring. Had a meeting with some members of the Noggetuck Valley Council of Governments and the Greater Bridgeport Council of Governments about Seymour, Ansonia, Derby and Shelton changing MPOs, which are municipal planning organizations. This is something that has been discussed since we switched from the Valley Cog to the Noggetuck Valley Cog. We did that four years ago. Our goal is to have this change take place by the start of the next fiscal year. So this would align us with the 19 towns along the Route 8 corridor as opposed to the seven towns along the 95 corridor. Attended the Seymour Kickoff Club golf tournament. They had a great turnout. I'd like to thank all the sponsors for their generous donations to our kickoff club. And then, since we're going to lead into this, I spent several hours with town engineer Brian Asteriak and Rory Burke touring all the roads that were recommended to us on social media. So we traveled around, took a look. Brian has readjusted the plan. You'll see it's gone from $5 million to $10.7 million. As we get into the agenda, actually, our next item, we're going to go through and have some discussion. And just to answer Mr. North's question, because we can't respond during a public comment, we're not going to be making decisions tonight because you're going to get hit with a lot of new information. So I want to give everybody the opportunity to digest it and then we'll make final decisions and actually vote on the ballot question at our next meeting in two weeks. So that closes the first electman's report. So with that, move to item number six, discussion, take possible action with town engineer regarding road repair. So our last meeting, Brian gave a report and an update on kind of where we are with the road program and made a recommendation of $5 million worth of repairs. You had asked that we put some information out on social media to solicit input from the residents, which we did. We received about 120 or so comments. Some constructive and having to do with roads, some just talking about other different things. So we went out and we toured as many of the roads as we could. And obviously, as we did that, Brian made notes. And then added costs. So I'm going to have Brian kind of go back through where we are and then we'll kind of take it from there. So Brian?
Good evening. For the record, Brian Asteriak, professional engineer with B&amp;B Engineering. Before you, I gave you two handouts. The larger one, I'll get to it later. It's just a reprinting of the overall road summary of every road in the town. Figure one, which was the first one, the single sheet that I gave you, above the orange line is essentially the same list of roads that I gave you at the last meeting. There is one change. We swapped out Clinton Road with Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue was one of those roads that got a lot of social media comments. It does need some work and for a variety of reasons, we just swapped out Clinton with Washington. Clinton is down below now. There really isn't any distinguishing features between the roads above the orange line and below the orange line. The rest of the roads below the orange line are just the ones that we found on social media. They were the ones with the highest complaints. Like Mr. Miller said, we went around, we looked at all mall. I took notes to determine what I would recommend to be done with them. I adjusted the prices to estimate how much it would cost to do an appropriate fix on these roads. And as you see at the bottom right-hand corner, the last number is $10.7 million. So that's a cumulative cost. If we were going to go ahead, that's what I estimate, to do all these roads, it would be about $10.7 million. I also took a look at sidewalks. That's the main reason I gave you the other packet. So we went through every road and determined whether they have sidewalks or not. There's three letters in that column. It's about just right of center of the spreadsheet. If it had sidewalks on the entire road, it was a Y for yes. If it had none, it was an N for no, and P was partial. You might notice, those are in alphabetical order, but you might notice that the vast majority of roads in town do not have sidewalks. I also have it on this other sheet, the figure one, we did put in whether or not we have sidewalks. And I did adjust some of the prices to account for some of the sidewalks that might need some repairs while we're there. If you're going to adjust these, this list into priority, it really is kind of random. All of these roads can use some work, including Agello's Farm Road. It needs, it has a lot of alligator cracking. But if you were going to try and identify which roads are worse than others, the ones at the top of the list probably would keep popping up, but the rest of them, you can swap them out. And it's hard to judge which ones need it more than the others. So I leave that in your good hands. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Go ahead. Federal error.
You're saying you leave it in our capable hands, but I have to imagine in my line of work, moving machinery around is a big cost. So they're not going to jump from here to here to here. So is there any progress going from kind of working your way from one side of the town to the other? Does that make sense or is everything so mobile that you could just pick up and it doesn't matter at all, doesn't add a cost?
For the numbers that we're looking at and for the amount of work that needs to be done, I don't think the mobilization really would make a huge difference in the cost. And I've been trying to spread the work around town just to hit a lot of different areas. I don't think it would make a huge difference, especially if we're giving a multimillion dollar contract to a contractor.
But from an impact, an area shutting it down for a period of time and then having to come back in, that type of movement?
For the most part, we're not shut, for the most part, we're not shutting anything down. Most of the time, we can do this work and they're still working around it. Very rarely do we find the need to actually shut it down.
Yeah, I'm over-exaggerating. Shutting down, but you're going to, you're going to block off roads, you're going to, in certain areas, then you're going to come back in another time. And I think there is a strategy that you'd want to keep if things were closer by.
We can focus on a certain area of the road, a certain area of the town, but the needs of the town is town-wide. We all know that.
Well, Bob, I think to your question, we give them the list in advance and they strategize how they want to move their equipment.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We certainly, the last time we went around, we had a whole list of roads. And the contractor and I sat down and figured out the best way to move around the town. A lot of the roads that are on the upper list are roads that are in neighborhoods that we did the rest of the neighborhood and these are the last few roads. So it closes out that neighborhood for 15 to 20 years, which is, which is one of the tertiary goals of this.
Last thing, you said that this upper grouping is something to focus on more than the lower group? Lower grouping below the orange is more interchangeable?
No, I think, say, the top 11 or 12 roads are the ones that I think need the most amount of work. And the rest of them, you can interchange because they're all in about the same condition.
Okay, I was a little confused because I see some Bs in the upper area and then Cs down below. So that's why I assume that it would only be Cs and Ds as the higher priority.
It's really hard to drop the condition of an entire road down to a single grade letter. I know we try to do it, but there are B roads that are in high use that could use the repairs.
They're going to deteriorate faster, so they need to be repaired.
Well, they're just, they're used more, there's more truck traffic, like Progress Avenue right at the top of the list is a B. But it's, it's got heavy use with heavy trucks. It's got a lot of traffic. It's one of those roads that might deteriorate faster because of that. And then there's smaller roads that might be Cs or Ds, but they're not as high use. There might be at the end of cul-de-sac where there's only six or eight houses. So you got to weigh that with, with the cost versus the use versus the long-term benefit of it. And that's kind of how I came up with the majority of this list.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, what other questions, comments? All right, so we can go about this two ways. One, we could accept what was initially put in front of us. Or we can mix and match with the recommendations that were made by the residents. I mean, I'm not asking for an answer tonight. But what I would ask you to do is at least take a look at roads 25 through 46. If you've never driven on the road, please take a few minutes and just kind of drive through. Because while, you know, some people live on that road and, you know, they may have some cracking on the road and things like that, to them, that's the worst road in town because that's where they live. They see it every day. But when you start to compare some of these roads, what seems like a bad road is actually not a bad road. So just take some time and spend, it took us about three and a half hours, I think, for the three of us to drive around and look at all these roads, obviously going slow so Brian could really hang his head out the window and kind of evaluate what was going on.
One thing I might want to mention, the strategy here is to use this money to get a long-term solution for these roads. Another strategy that we could do, even though I wouldn't recommend it, is to do spot improvements in all the worst areas in the town and hit as many roads as we possibly can. And that might make the biggest impact from a perception, but I think it's a, it's a short-term solution to a long-term problem.
Just a band-aid though.
Yeah. So if, if this is, I think the town's been on the right path in spending an awful lot of money in fixing these roads. And if, and if that's the strategy in the future, then I think this is a great way of doing it. Let's tackle a bunch of the roads, get them done for 15 or 20 years, as long as, in the long term, there's still foresight that we're going to need more money to keep going. And we can worry about that next time, but I think that's the strategy that we've been expecting.
Yeah, I, so a couple of questions on that. I'm fully in support of, just broadly, fully in support of doing a road properly rather than patching little things because that, I hate how that looks and I like this, especially when drainage has to be addressed. And I've seen some areas where you get flooding. And we've had rainstorms lately that just, once everything's filled up, all over the road. So I am definitely, because I came in this a little later than everybody else. The other $10.7 million?
Another, it's an additional $5 million. Additional $5 million. So it's $10.7 total.
Total.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So additional $5 million, where's that coming? How's that impacting?
We don't have it.
Okay, so that would just, we'd add to what we're going to bond for?
No, we're going to keep the bond between the $5 and $6 million.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest will just be planned out over the coming years.
Right. This is just a suggestion.
Oh, yeah, understood. And that's, as being new to this, I'm trying to figure out. I didn't know if we were going to go buy some lottery tickets.
Well, we still put money, even in the non-bonding years, this year, we did about $400,000 worth of work. Actually, that was just completed. But unfortunately, that was one road in the industrial park. So, you know, a lot of it's going to depend on how revaluation works and how quickly we can get our proactive road program up to about $1 million. So assuming that we could do that, we could take care of, you know, 25 through 46 probably over four years. But again, we have to get there and a lot of that's going to be dependent on revaluation and how that works and then what plan gets put in place between us and the Board of Finance for a long-term solution.
Understood.
So, but we won't know that till October.
What we're looking at now is a plan that we have for $5 million. Based on suggestions that we've gotten, we're seeing bumping that up to $10.7 for long-term solutions for a lot of the roads in the town.
I think if we turn Brian loose, he'd come up with about $25 million.
Oh, no, no, we're not going to do that yet.
Road work that needs to be done.
I think, I think the point of this is that there's more roads than money that's available. So there's always going to be a need. Although the town has made great strides, more strides than most of the surrounding towns in catching up with the maintenance requirements of these towns.
Yeah, I don't know if it's possible, but at some point, I think that grading criteria should be, I mean, we went back and now we made some changes and moved things in that I think that has to be important from an engineering standpoint, make sure we have that grading right, whatever that criteria is, because that's what we're going to make a lot of decisions on.
I'll relook at the grading.
And you're right, you made, you made the comment that neighborhoods might call in because they drive that road every day and it's the worst road, but maybe it's not from a grading standpoint. We have to address our lower graded roads.
I'll definitely look at it a little more. It's also harder, like some of the roads are broken up into, into sections that might be worse than other sections.
Right.
So you might get a B, but there might be areas on the road that have sections of D. So we average it out. And rather than having a, an eight-inch binder, we drop it down to a two-and-a-half-inch binder. So, I mean, we could break out every little section, but it just...
Then you tie in whether it needs drainage or not that might, and they need both, that might drive the grading even lower, right? So...
Well, this too is a summary. And if you look at the book that Brian has that he updates every year, it's a breakdown of every single road. So you can go and look at the specific, I know you know that, but you can look at the specific notes on each and every road, exactly what the issue is. Sure.
Question. In terms of assisting us with the grading, would using a plus or minus two, if needed, would that help?
It could.
Or would that muddy the waters or?
It could.
It's just, it's, I'm trying to just mention that it's very hard to drop it down to a single grade, whether it's plus, minus. Some roads, like Agello's Farm is a, is a good example. It's alligator cracked. You go on there and it looks bad, but the base is actually relatively good. Progress Avenue, the base is actually pretty good. All we got to do is take off the top layer and put down two more inches. There's other roads where the base is horrible. We got to rip it all out.
Sure.
Olbrook Road might be one of those. So it's just, it's a very subjective thing. I'll definitely take another look at it.
But you're adding something, you're adding something... Yeah, you're adding something I didn't catch into and you just said that. So the grading is, you're also considering how much work it's going to take to correct.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
It's just, I caution everybody to just look at the grade and only the grade. And I'm happy to give as much information as you want to further justify the work that we're recommending. But the grade is just one portion of the rest of the analysis.
That's why I'm glad we're being included in the process, obviously, as a board. But it's, in my opinion, you're the expert and you've, you've spent countless hours on this. And I appreciate the fact I'm personally being asked for my opinion on certain roads, but I'm going to defer to your expertise to get the worst ones done first for the best bang for our buck. I got to be honest with you, I really don't feel, I need to be laborless forever. You've done a great job assessing everything. We've made great progress. We've repaired roads that haven't been touched in this town for decades. So I think we're doing what we need to do for our community. And that's just my opinion on it, like to Bob's point. I'm not an engineer. I don't know a lot about, about roads. I'm going on your expertise, what needs to be done, and I defer to that unless there's something you feel that is kind of gray and then we could take a vote on and possibly maybe high traffic or whatever, whatever you feel. There's machinery in the area. Let's get this road done too to save us money. But again, I defer to your expertise to a large degree because I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this town. I just want it done efficiently and the best bang for our dollar.
And I'm happy to do that.
Brian, if we do the one, the original one through 24, so from Progress down to Highland Ave, that'll eliminate, so we've achieved our goal of eliminating all the F and D roads in town?
I got to check on the D. We've already eliminated all the F roads.
Right.
The D roads, I'm not totally sure. There might be some really small roads out there that we kept off the list just because there's no high impact to them.
Okay.
But I can double-check that.
Okay. Okay, if I...
That, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
One other thing, that being said, the C roads will be turning into D roads.
Right.
Correct, yeah. It's dynamic, right?
So there's, there's just going to be an endless supply for the, for the, you know, future of work that needs to be done. We all know that.
Brian?
Sorry?
I'm sorry. I don't see, and could you just look into for me, please, the second part of Titus Road? One, Titus Road, mountain road near Good Shepherd Church, you have Titus Road, it's paved, and then it stops.
It's a private dirt road.
Is it a private dirt road?
Yeah, we don't plow it.
Second part, where, right where it turns into Cathy?
Yes.
Yeah, where it loops around and then comes back on the second part. It's actually, we pulled the deed up a year or two ago.
Okay.
And it's listed that it's an unimproved.
It's not used or anything, is it?
Well, there's three, there's, I think, three houses on it, but it's listed when it was built, right in the deed, that it's an unimproved town.
So it's a paper road?
All right.
Yeah.
Unimproved.
Yeah.
So what is it, we want to do with that?
If it's a private road, then...
Well, it's not a private road, but it's one that's not, it was turned over to us that way and that's the condition that it's to stay. We don't plow it.
We don't plow, okay, because it's all...
It's essentially being used as a, as a common use.
It's a driveway, yeah.
Okay.
We've helped them out in big storms. When we had the big storm, we obviously ran the trucks down because they just couldn't.
For emergency reasons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
All right, so, oh, go ahead, it's not, sorry. I don't have anything for Brian necessarily, but, so maybe if anybody else has something for Brian, they can go ahead of me, but...
All right, anybody else for Brian?
No? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, so I have a couple of things. One, there are a bunch of Ds that are still on this list that aren't on this list, just as a point of information. Just looking at the front page, you can see a couple of them. But with that said, I, I agree with most of what Al said, but I do think that there is plenty of room for philosophical discussion on this kind of stuff, taking into account all of the great work that Brian and his team does. Because there are, there are roads down, you know, on the bottom that we could make a case for, should be higher priority, I think, without a doubt. Not that I'm saying that there is, but I think tonight, we should probably come out of this meeting at least with some sort of strategy before we go out and start playing Jenga with the, with the roads. So I'll just start off the top. I think we should certainly prioritize the industrial park, which I think is also something that you could argue is a philosophical choice, despite the fact that Brian put it as his top four roads. And then I think we should definitely take care of all the Ds on this list, just to kind of get those out of the way. If we did all of that, that would come to $3.1 million roughly. So that would leave us just under $2 million to play around with if everybody agreed with that, just, you know, as an example. But we definitely do have to have the much dreaded talk about Clinton Road, whether we're going to go forward or not with it. Because there's a strong argument to be made that Clinton Road deserves to be right at the top of the list. There's a strong argument to be made that Clinton Road doesn't deserve to be anywhere near the list, depending on your philosophy. So that's another one we should definitely try to hash out sooner than later.
Oh, okay. No, I thought there was more coming. I think we were just pausing for breath. Okay. Anybody else? Comments, thoughts? I mean, the only thing that I'm, I guess, committed to or locked in on is the industrial park. I mean, the roads up there are, are pretty bad. And that, the companies up there do drive a tremendous amount of revenue into this town. I think it's something that's extremely important when you have the CEOs of Thule and Basement Systems and MPI all calling together.
That's about $2.3 million right there, those four roads.
Yeah, if these roads haven't been touched in 25 or 30, since the park was basically put in, I think it's time. And particularly with the growth we've seen just in those three companies and the amount of traffic. For some people, all they see of Seymour is the industrial park. And with the number of people at Basement Systems... with the number of people that Basement Systems alone brings in to Seymour, I think it just looks good for the town if they're coming in off of sixty-seven and driving on nicely paved roads and, up into the park. So I think, you know, I agree with Stefan that that, I, I think is, is a priority. You know, to Brian's point, on the Ds, you know, the roads are going to continue to change their grades, the As are gonna become Bs and so on, but, you know, the key thing that we can't lose sight of is the reinvestment in the work that we've done over the last six years. So Brian spends a lot of time with the crack sealing and staying on top of these roads and just because we did a road two years ago doesn't mean we can ignore it for seven or eight years, which unfortunately has been the case in this town. So Brian, the, the crack sealing budget is actually gonna continue to grow over the next five or six years, along with the road striping and all the other basic maintenance that we need to do. So, um, you know, I, I tend to lean towards Brian's initial recommendations, but at the same time, we work for the people, so I don't want to ignore some comments that have been made by the residents. I think, you know, we ask them for their opinion, so I think we at least need to take it into account. I think that's where you saw the change from Washington coming on and Clinton coming off. And to that philosophical point that Stefan brought up, you know, it's hard to do a road in the middle of the woods that there's not one Seymour resident that lives on and ignore a road, that's a, a major cut-through as well, that probably has, you know, thirty houses on it that lead to streets that probably have another hundred houses on it. So, you know, I go back and forth on, on that as well, so. But I asked Brian just to flip-flop those two, at least in the initial, in the initial list, and, you know, you guys could decide that that's not the way you want to go and that's fine, you know, we, as always, we vote and that's what the majority does. So, is there, well, look, let's go, are there any lists, on the list, that you absolutely say no to? And maybe we can whittle, even if we knock off five or six roads right now. And then unfortunately, it is gonna be a game of Jenga, leading up to the next meeting, trying to mix and match these.
I just, I just have a question about the community center, how is that gonna factor in if we do go for bonding for a new community center?
The, the two-hundred thousand is just in there, the two-hundred thousand for the community center and the two-hundred thousand for downtown, so seventeen and eighteen that are highlighted, those are more placeholders. So if, for some reason, the, the bond question for the new community center, senior center that fails, then we have to do some work to that parking lot and the sidewalks around that building. Brian estimates we'd need about two-hundred thousand to, to do that. If that were to pass and we move forward, and I actually think that it will, that two-hundred thousand would just fall out and it can be used on the next thing. What, the question that we're going to approve, or the question that we're gonna put out is based, spending five million dollars, five to six million dollars on the town's road plan in fiscal year twenty. The town road plan is gonna be this. So we're able to basically pick and choose off this list, but I would want residents to know by, you know, the middle of September, hey, this is the list, this is what you're actually voting on. So some people may say, well, I want to vote yes, 'cause my road's on it, or they may say, my road's not on it, so I don't care, I'm not gonna vote, that type of thing. I want people to understand what they're voting on. But it does give us the flexibility to move around to whatever's put forward in the road plan.
Well, knowing that, it would be my, and this, I'm sure will not be unanimous, but it would be my feeling that we should take the community center contingency out and move Clinton Road in.
Okay. That's a no. What else?
So how bad are First, Second, and Third Avenue?
They need work.
And I understand they're in prime spots in our downtown, but...
Well, they're up on the hill, up top.
Okay, got it, got it. I was gonna say, 'cause these aren't that bad, so that's why I was a little confused. Alright, thanks.
I mean, they're, they're smaller streets, but they're... Yeah, they're, I mean, they're beaten up.
Yeah.
So... Again, you know, to the point Brian made, I think every row, all these forty-six roads could use some work in some way or another. It's just a matter of the priorities and, you know, we don't have enough to address every single need that we currently have in fiscal year twenty-one.
I think the only thing that's hard to see here is if we, there's certain things that we can do with crack seal to make up for some of this too. And that's where you were going with the grade, where we go with the grading, do you give it a plus because we can cover it with crack seal for a period of time?
Right.
And it buys us at least a couple of years before we have to really react on it, and at least we know we did work to it. I think that's the other component of this, is because if we're gonna do some crack seal work, I think we're gonna have to identify it.
And that's, you know, when the town used to do a lot of chip sealing, that used to be kind of the reason why that would, if you do the chip sealing, you'd get another five or six years out of it, but what we would do is just chip seal and chip seal and chip seal and chip seal, and it's thirty years later and the road was actually past its prime twenty years ago.
Yeah, I'm not inferring that.
No, I know, I know you're not, but that's why we need to, to get away from that and, you know, and to the gentleman from Acello's Farm point, you know, that's a road that probably should have been crack sealed six or seven years ago, maybe, and maybe now it might even be too late, 'cause I know we talked about Brookfield, which is...
Yeah, there's some roads that go next to the, to the drainages that are falling in some of those areas.
But crack sealing a road like that at this point is...
Yeah, I don't know if I misunderstood the comment, but I just want to make clear, none of these are...
Right.
...good for crack sealing.
Right.
Right, because others on the list, I'm thinking through, that if we're gonna, because you had made the mention on grading, if we did work on it, we could at least identify that, we did some crack seal at a certain road.
I have that in the, I should have that in the actual...
I thought you've been grading lately.
Yeah, so I have a column.
You're ranking.
Ranking.
We have a column in the main spreadsheet that tells us when we've striped, when we've cracked sealed. Crack sealing is ideal three to five years after it was paved and then for the next four or five years, but once we start getting the major breakup, crack sealing's worthless.
Alright, so do we want to have two weeks now to kind of digest all this and then come back at our meeting on the twentieth? But, you know, at that point, I would at least want to prioritize the forty-six roads. Again, it doesn't have to be specific because we can still mix and match at that point based on need, but if we're gonna ask the residents to vote, you know, I want them at least to have a good understanding of what the priority, priority is.
And I think it does warrant prioritizing the, the roads that do fall on the bottom side of this list, because with the last round of bonding, we were able to extend it a bit beyond the original list too, so that is something to keep in mind though. I know Brian had said that twenty-five through forty-six are all pretty much interchangeable, but if we do have the, the capacity to get out there and look at them and hear from more residents, I think we, uh, we ought to try to prioritize those as well, whether they be the roads that are there now or ones that fall out of the top twenty-four.
And then, just one other thing to add too, and, you know, Brian mentioned before, if you look at Mountain Road and Old Antonia Road, two very long, if we were to do those roads, you know, both those roads are well over a million dollars each, but by doing some of those spot repairs, as, as Brian had talked about, it gives us the chance to fix some of the bad sections, to make it at least bearable for folks who drive up and down those roads for the next four or five years until we get an opportunity to, to get there. And if, you know, if you've driven Mountain Road recently, just the three or four spots that you fix have definitely made a difference with those roads, so. Okay, so any last thoughts, questions, comments? No? Okay, so for our next meeting on the twentieth, bless you. Just kind of come prepared with your thoughts, kind of the reasons why you want certain roads. If you're comfortable with what Brian has, that's fine. If you want to move some stuff up to Stefan's point, where, you know, taking out seventeen and eighteen and moving Clinton Road in, those types of things, we can have those, those conversations. Okay? Excellent, thank you, Brian. Alright, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding town planner, Mr. Beturla.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You will recall that Rick Dunn and his folks came here and made a presentation about a month, a little over a month ago, and from around that time to the present, we've been trying to work out the terms and conditions on a service agreement between the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments and the Town of Seymour for a planner, for planning services. And we have, if you recall, the, we had certain issues at that time in terms of working through the, the agreement. We have resolved those issues to the satisfaction, I believe, of the Town of Seymour, and I'll take you through the terms of the agreement. The agreement is, was going to be a one-year agreement, but it took some time for the COG to identify the individual that they're going to be sending here. So the actual term of the agreement will begin on September one, twenty nineteen and end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, so it'll be a ten-month agreement with one year, the, the intention is to have one-year amendments thereafter, so it's ending at the end of the fiscal year. So that was a change that was made for both parties' convenience. The fee for services being provided on an annual basis is thirty thousand dollars, that remains the same. This individual's also going to devote time to one of our neighboring communities for the same fee. We reduced the scope of an indemnity provision that they were looking for from the town so that the town will indemnify the COG if their planner is sued in connection with the services provided here. That is a very rare event, I must say, I've been doing this stuff for thirty-eight years, defending public officials in federal court for civil rights violations and the like, and I've never had a planner sued in connection with the actions taken on behalf of a municipality. I've had municipalities sued, planning commissions, zoning commissions, but not a planner. And we have a, one of the points of contention that they agreed to was we have a termination for cause provision with a thirty days' notice. Before, it was a ninety-day provision. There is still a ninety-day without cause provision if you intend to withdraw from the agreement, but with that, I think we have, we have a satisfactory agreement and assuming you're, you're agreed to that and you feel good about this, I think it, it would be incumbent upon the board to authorize the first selectmen to enter into an agreement with the Valley COG for the planning services under those terms and conditions.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions?
Do we have a job description for that? I can't remember what we approved exactly.
You did.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it with me tonight, but it...
But we do have something that they've agreed to and that we agreed to.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They, the, so if it's not satisfactory beyond ninety days, we're on the hook till the next, uh...
You, you have a ni...
Contract...
You have a ninety day, you can get out of the contract. Say, say they're providing good services, but you just changed your minds.
Well, no, let, let's say they're providing good services until the ninety-day point and then the service falls off badly, we're stuck until the next contract renewal, right? But it's, it's every year?
No, it's a, it's an, the agreement terminates on June thirtieth.
Okay, so we'll be less, a little less than a year.
Ten, ten months, yeah.
But typically, it'll be June thirtieth every year.
Typically, it will run, that's right, July one to June thirtieth.
Yeah.
You'll have, you, you can withdraw upon ninety days' notice, or you can terminate for cause.
Yep, okay, so do we...
On thirty days' notice.
Sure. Obviously, I don't know the person, I don't know if anybody knows the person who it would be, but do we have reason to believe that they would be able to come to some of these meetings and give reports? So we feel comfortable about that?
We were involved in the interview process.
Okay.
So there was representatives from Seymour Auction and the COG all did the interviewing.
Okay.
So, alright, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? So Rich, what is the motion you'd like to...
A, a motion to authorize you to enter into an agreement with the Nogatuck Valley COG for planning services in accordance with the terms and conditions that I recited.
Someone like to make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stained, cheer votes, I, motion passes five-zero, and Monica, please note that Mr. Bruno left the room for the vote. Okay, item number eight, action to lieu a special town meeting regarding resolution to amend the town's lease purchase agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated for energy savings improvements in town facilities and the Seymour Public Schools. So I'll read the resolution into the record, then we can vote. Be it resolved, section one, that the Town of Seymour amend the lease purchase agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated for energy savings improvements in various town facilities and the Seymour Public Schools to authorize the town to finance additional project costs in an amount not to exceed five million, two-hundred-seventy-two-thousand, three-hundred-ninety-two dollars for a total project cost of an amount not to exceed fourteen million, four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. And section two, that the first selectmen is authorized to execute the amended lease purchase agreement, other agreements, and other documents on behalf of the town for the project, and the Board of Selectmen and other town officials and employees are authorized to take all actions necessary and proper to carry out the project. Have a motion to approve the resolutions as presented. Motion by Stefan, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stained, cheer votes, I, motion passes five-zero. Okay, item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding CARES agreement extension. In your package, you have a letter, and please note, Mr. Bruno, should we turn at seven forty-eight? A letter to, to myself from the President of CARES, Deborah Ice, and I'll read the letter into the record. Dear Mr. Miller, reference is hereby made that certain lease agreement by and between Town of Seymour and Coco's Animal Rescue Efforts of Seymour Incorporated at a space at one fifteen Silvermine Road in Seymour, Connecticut dated September twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, and in accordance with section two B of the license, notice is hereby given by licensee option to renew the lease for an additional term of one year commencing on July first, two thousand nineteen. All other terms and conditions of the lease license shall remain in full force and effect, including but not limited to the licenser's termination rights under section two C of the lease. Thank you for your attention to this matter, very truly yours. And it's signed off by Deborah Ice, its president. So, again, this is gonna be renewing the lease that we've had in pla, excuse me, the license that we've had in place with Coco's Animal Rescue for the last two years up at our old animal shelter at one fifteen Silvermine Road. So everything is staying as it has been. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the license agreement as presented. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stained, cheer votes, I, motion passes six-zero. Item number ten, discussion, take possible action regarding surplus equipment auction service. Okay, when we updated the ordinances, when we went through that originally, Rory made a little presentation about the group AAR Auctions Incorporated, we went through the process and our Absolute Auctions and Realty Incorporated, it's called. And, but we didn't want to do anything with this until we passed the ordinance, which has since passed, so now we're circling back. And again, as a reminder, any surplus equipment that we have will be given to these folks. They will handle all, the entire process. There'll be no cost to the Town of Seymour, their compensation will be from a service or a premium, a buyer's premium, they call it, that will be placed on any item, and you can see that listed under compensation, section A, B, C, and D. So Rich, is there anything you want to add with regards to?
I just noted that I have a...
But we're not required to actually give them anything. We could still do stuff on our own if we so choose.
So as long as you use it as needed, perfect.
Yes. Going out, how much equipment have we done this with in eight years, two or three times? Yeah, so I mean, it would have been very helpful, the last one where we did, with probably twenty pieces of equipment. This'll just make things a little quicker, so. Okay, with that then, I'll entertain a motion to allow the first selectmen to enter into an agreement, or to sign the agreement as proposed with Absolute Auctions and Realty Incorporated. Motion by Stefan, second by... Motion by Stephon, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding census complete count committee. Okay, in your packets, you have just a few slides from a presentation that was given, I think, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, with regards to the upcoming census. There's been a push by Lieutenant Governor's Office to come up with ways to improve the census count in the state of Connecticut. So, the Valley is coming together through Team and a few of the other organizations, and trying to set up these, what they call, complete count committees. Rory is the unofficial chair for the Town of Seymour. He was voted on today in the office. There was three of us, and he got voted 2 to 1. So, he's the winner. But essentially, what we're looking for are people who want to be on this committee that could help, and I'll let Rory talk a little bit more about this, but would have access into some of the parts of the community where people may not be comfortable coming forward to be a part of the census, whether it be for religious reasons, language, ethnicity, what have you. So, we're trying to gather volunteers that can all work together, be a couple of months' worth of, not even work, but just time that would be spent on this. And then, we would report into a bigger valley entity, a man named Mike Burke, no relation. He's actually a hired person by the census that is kind of managing the operation in this general area of Connecticut. So, this is more informational than anything, and it's also just to put the word out that we're looking for people. So, if you know of anyone who may be interested, please have them reach out to us, and we can certainly put them on, on the group. They can make, you know, whether it be phone calls or contacts, or kind of help with the process. Rory, is there anything you wanted to add as the unofficial chairperson?
With an honor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the point of the complete count committee is not to do the counting. It's essentially PR, right? So, all we're trying to do is to get the word out about the census. Census Day falls in April of 2020, and that's when the actual reporting is done. Our job will be wrapped up before that. It is really just to identify organizations and groups within the community to perform outreach. So, for example, Mike Burke was present at the meeting that the Valley Community Foundation put together. There is something called Title 13 that protects anyone from any repercussions of responding to the census. So, citizenship status, things that would prevent people from responding to it. They cannot be persecuted based on their response. And that's probably something that a lot of people don't know. That's the kind of thing that we would want to include in any communication, because ultimately, you know, we want everybody to respond because this is how seats in Congress are allocated. This is how federal funding is allocated. So, that's, that's the whole thing. Kurt and I actually sat down and identified some groups in the community that we plan to reach out to, but that's, that's kind of what we're looking for, is ideas on, if you can think of a group within the community and organization.
Questions, comments? Rob seems to want to join. Rob's on, Vice Chair.
So, would you do presentations for them? Is that, I'm guessing, for those groups to...
Yeah, so the idea is, you know, we were trying to think Seymour, you know, demographically speaking, is not, exactly. So, so, you know, for example, there is, on Main Street, there's the Albanian Social Club that just opened up. I know some Albanians, but I'm not well-known in the Albanian community. So, for example, we might reach out to the owner, the, you know, proprietor of the club, and ask them to, you know, just post information in their business, if they can, you know, translate it to Albanian, whatever it may be, because ultimately, you want people who are known and trusted in those communities to do the outreach work themselves. This is not a, this is more an idea group than it is a work-intensive group. No. No, we don't want to, right? We want, you know, the pastor of a church to talk about it, yeah.
And Team is heavily involved in some of the other valley-reaching organizations, so they'll help as well.
I'll make Dave.
Oh, Dave, yeah. Yeah, Morgan can walk in a seersucker suit.
You saw the way he danced at the...
He's a dancer. He can move. All right, so anything else for our unofficial chair, Rory Burke? No relation to Mike Burke?
And Vice Chair.
And Vice Chair Rob Van Egan, so blessed. No? Excellent. Rory, thank you.
So, we want to take action, actually, as well.
Nope. It's more informational, and to see if we can get one or two of you to join, and that was successful. So, thank you, Rob. If not, we would have had to keep talking until somebody actually volunteered. That's right. Exactly. All right, so item, actually, next item I'd like to add to the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding abatement of property tax for George J. Hummel Little League. Motion by Stephon, second by Ann Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, discussion, possible action regarding abatement of property tax for George J. Hummel Little League. So, in your packets, you have a letter, which I'll read into the record. It says, "On behalf of the George J. Hummel Little League, I would like to request an abatement of the property tax on our property at 12 Chestnut Street. As you know, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The issue which causes the tax collector to build George J. Hummel Little League stems from the stipulation in the agreement in 1950, in which Dr. John Cassagrand donated the property to George J. Hummel Little League, with the understanding that in the event of the dissolution of the league, the property reverts back to the Cassagrand family. In previous years, you granted an abatement of the tax, and we are requesting a similar abatement this year. Sincerely, William Regani, President of the George J. Hummel Little League." So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we abate the full property tax amount owed on 12 Chestnut Street to benefit the George J. Hummel Little League.
So moved.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 12 is appointments. We have one appointment before us. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment dated August 6, 2019. Motion by Stephon, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 13, tax refunds and abatements. Entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated August 6, 2019, oh, excuse me, August 2, 2019, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Bob. Under discussion, make sure there's no conflicts. It's a big one. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 14 is transfers. We have no transfers before us tonight. Item number 15, we have just two pieces of correspondence. One is a letter to the Town of Seymour regarding a grant that was awarded to us, a community connectivity grant for Woodside Avenue Sidewalk Project, something that Brian, oh, he left, had applied for. This will run a sidewalk from Route 67 all the way to the Oxford Town Line on Woodside Avenue. And the second is a request that was made with regards to the change of a registrar of voters, which, a town, a legal opinion, which Rich provided. Oh, and check, the check registers as well. All right, item number 16, public comments. Any public comments? No public comment. We'll move on to item number 17, selectmen's public comments, and we'll start with Stephon. Whoa, I didn't even get your name down, but you messed that up. Rob? All right, there we go. Al Bruno. Al is folding his hands in deep thought. He's prepared to make a statement. Al Bruno. Ann Marie?
Be quiet, be quiet.
All good.
New comment.
Mr. Finley. Rory Burke, is there anything we've missed? Mr. Beterla, anything you'd like to add on this wonderful occasion?
Make a motion, Chair.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Mark the meeting closed at 8:02 PM.